It being past the hour of 7 o'clock on Monday, June 1st, 2015, I'll call the meeting to order on a motion to admit Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following persons be admitted to the meeting. Elizabeth Rourke, Finance Director; Darren Klein, Town Council; Robert Toros, Transcript with Freedom of the Floor; Carol DeCrow, Town Clerk Staff, Freedom of the Floor; Wayne Hartig, School Department; Daniel McKnight, Town Planner; Peter Manjane, Chair of the Youth Services Committee; Amy Lookowitz, Youth Services; Michael Connelly, School Department; John Bernard, School Department; Eugene Turek, Town IT Department; Kevin Farley, Student Volunteer; Logan Stanbury, Student Volunteer; Michael Luciano, Student Volunteer; Geraldine Kathamet-Madham, Student Volunteer; Kathina Hesapis, Student Volunteer; Debbie Carbone, Assessing; Michael Murphy, Police Department; Mary Ann McKay, Treasurer Collector; Maureen Stevens, Operations Director, Parks and Recreation; Rob Carbone, NORCAM, Freedom of the Floor; Jason Smith, NORCAM, Freedom of the Floor; Sue Magna, Veteran Services; Jean Ferriella, Seven Tranvalent Way; Phil Ferriella, Seven Tranvalent Way; Paul Dorsey, Three Kennenworth, LA, Havel; Jacob Anieri, Five Tower Hill Road; Martin Fear, Board Health Agent; Richard Carnaval, DPW Director; Teresa Chenny, Main Attraction; and Don Bornstein, Attorney, TZE Contractors Supply. We have one more. Also Scott Lavaziri, Three Hanson Road, North Reading; and Allison Finnegan, Three
On the motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. While they're filing in, a couple of housekeeping items, the tellers for this evening, counting the front and to my right will be Chuck Carrucci, counting the center section, Joseph Fode, and counting to my left Marty Tilton. All registered voters should be wearing a red ribbon; all visitors and guests would be wearing a black ribbon; department heads can sit in the first few rows in the front center section, or you can sit with a board or committee if that's what you're associated with. Please turn off your cellphones so that no one gets disturbed. And I'd also like to thank and acknowledge the student volunteers who will be running the microphones, so they'll run up and down the stairs to bring you the microphone so nobody has to traverse the stairs tonight if they wish to speak, and they'll also serve as wheelchair attendants. They are Kevin Farley, Logan Stansbury, Michael Luciano, Katerina Hesapis, Geraldine Kathamotin, and Deandrea Gibbs. Thank you very much to them. If we could, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, as a personal privilege, I'd like to mention to town meeting that Martin Fear, our Board of Health Director, is retiring after 34 years of service. We should give him a round of applause. Additionally, John Welch, who's the Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, retiring after 18 years of service for the community.
Mr. Misery, I'd ask if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Misery, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and to refer to the article by number, and further to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constable.
We have the motion, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to mention the water restriction notice that's up on the screen for everybody.
Article 1, Mr. Yul. Oh, before you go, Mr. Yul, there are a car or two parked in the traffic circle, which is the student drop-off. If your car is parked there, please go move it. It is an obstruction, so... Mr. Yul, Article 1.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 1, amend FY 2015 budget. I move to pass over Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Yul?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
The Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 2, Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On motion, on the motion for Article 2, fund FY 2015 snow and ice deficit, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $321,000 and to transfer the sum of $250,000 from overlay surplus for a total of $571,000 to fund a deficit in the FY 2015 snow and ice budget as specified in Article 2 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Yul?
Yes, on a majority vote, the Board of Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Herbert.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 3, Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion, Article 3, FY 2015 appropriate funds to Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $561,922 to be added to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund established under Article 5 of the October 2007 town meeting as specified in Article 3 as printed in the warrant.
This motion requires a two-thirds vote as it transfers money from a stabilization -- it's a transaction to a stabilization fund. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Yul?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Kelleher.
This transfer is to fund the debt service, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 4, Mr. Prisco.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from FY 2015 Water Department retained earnings the sum of $108,547 to be added to the Water Stabilization Fund as specified in Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
This article also requires a two-thirds vote. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Prisco?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Herbert.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 5, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Prisco?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 6, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 6 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Prisco?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee also recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article 6, Catherine Maniopelli.
Mr. Moderator, Article Number 7.
Oh, I'm sorry, 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to choose all necessary town officers not elected by ballot and to determine what instructions shall be given.
For the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Herbert.
There's no action required.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 8, Mrs. Maniopelli.
Mr. Moderator, Article 8 here and act on reports of town officers and committees. I move to accept the printed town report for the year 2014 as a report of the town officers and committees, and to hear other reports as may be presented at this meeting.
We have... You want to wait to hear the reports? We have several reports to be given tonight. The Finance Committee has a report.
There's a little yellow bridge right here that I have to walk over. It's only marginally better than being in the orchestra pit last year. Hi, I'm Abby Herbert. I'm Chairman of the Finance Committee. Good evening. This evening you will be voting on the budget for fiscal 2016. I was thinking a little bit about this, and imagine that you or your partner have received a modest salary increase somewhere, and you come home and you're sort of excited about it. You think, gee, maybe we can go out for dinner a couple more times a year, maybe we can take a long weekend trip somewhere. And then as time progresses, you discover that your health insurance costs have gone up, your cost of commuting has gone up, it's no longer a nickel for a bottle of Coke, and your trips to the grocery store are increasingly expensive. And by the time you actually get your salary increase, it's already been spent in the additional costs of living. This is something akin to what the schools and the town have been going through for the last number of years, and especially this year. With decreased revenues, but expenses that outpace the revenues, it's been a difficult time this season to decide how to best meet the needs of the people of North Reading and to deliver the services that we've all become used to. For those people that have struggled to make some of these hard decisions and to do this balancing act to come up with a balanced budget, many, many thank yous. I'd also like to talk about the town stabilization fund. This is a fund that's used in the case of a major crisis, but it also is a fund that helps our credit rating and allows us to borrow money, for example, to build this new school at a lower interest rate than we might otherwise be forced to pay. Typically, we would like to have this as 5% of our net revenue budget. Unfortunately, at the moment, it's sort of stuck at 3.8. While we don't have enough money to add to the stabilization fund this year, going forward, we need to seriously consider adding more money to this. Three years ago, the Board of Selectmen formed the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. This committee was charged with creating a planning process for both short as well as long-term capital needs through the use of available cash and long-term debt. It's been a good committee that's worked diligently to fund a number of the items for both the schools as well as the town. Going forward, we would like to see less short-term borrowing and fund this plan in such a way that it can carry forward and meet our needs. Don Kelleher is Chairman of the Capital Committee, and he will be talking to you about the Capital Committee later on. One of the most important financial challenges facing North Reading is something called OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employee Benefits. In other words, health insurance for retirees. It's an obligation that we have for future retirees and their spouses, and it totals $67 million at the moment. That's a huge liability. At present, the Board of Selectmen has initiated a funding plan to cover the retirement healthcare costs of new employees. While this is a reasonable start, as we move down the road, we need to consider putting a far greater amount into this fund in order to meet this substantial debt. Again, I would like to thank the department heads and the school department, as well as the municipal government for all of the hard work in getting to tonight. It's never easy. I'd also like to thank Liz Rourke, the Finance Director for the town, who has been at all of our meetings and helped us through this process as well. So, on with the show.
Thank you. For the Capital Planning Committee, Mr. Kelleher.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Don Kelleher, and I'm Chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. As Abby mentioned, this committee was formed by the Board of Selectmen in 2012 with the purpose of advising the Board of Selectmen on the capital needs and the funding of those capital needs and producing an annual capital plan. The plan that we presented to the Selectmen in April of this year represents the third such plan that we've done. I want to acknowledge and thank my fellow committee members for their hours of service in preparing the Fiscal '16 capital recommendations. The committee members are Chairman of the BOS, Bob Misery; former BOS member, Joe Fode; Finance Committee Chair, Abby Herbert; School Committee Chair, Janine Embriano; School Director of Finance and Operations, Mike Connelly; Town Administration Administrator, Mike Gilberto; and last but not least, the Town's Finance Director, Liz Rourke, who did most of the heavy lifting for the committee. Special thanks to her. The committee looked at 32 projects totaling nearly $4 million from the municipal government and the schools, and we looked at an additional nine requests from the Water Enterprise totaling about $3.5 million. Hillview and Parks and Recreation Enterprises didn't make any capital requests this year. Our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen included 16 items for general government totaling $1.4 million. In the Water Enterprise requests, we recommended five of those totaling $1.9 million. These recommendations appear in Article 16 of the warrant, and we'll be asked to vote on them tonight. And at the time the warrant article is presented, I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have about individual items in the list. The committee developed a funding program to provide for the capital needs of the town by providing resources to acquire assets with useful lives of five years on a pay-as-you-go basis, and bonding items that had useful lives or will have useful lives of more than five years. Our goal is to use the annual appropriation and free cash for the short-term items and reduce our reliance on bonding for those items. This year, we're bonding about $105,000 in five-year items. By 2021, that number will be $50,000 or less. So, draw planning where we're getting to the point where at some point, all of the short-term items will be on a pay-as-you-go basis. The further goal is to maintain an annual debt service or non-exempt debt at $1.1 million. That's where we are now, that's where we have been for the past several years. We propose to use the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to pay debt service in excess of that amount, recognizing there may be times when we have to bond some items that would temporarily increase the debt service above that amount. We would offset it with funds in the stabilization fund, subject to approval of town meeting. We plan to add a net $800,000 to the fund over the next five years, which will bring the fund balance to a healthy balance of $1.8 million. This will allow the town to deal with emergency situations and smooth out the debt service impact of large, non-recurring items while at the same time having a sustainable capital improvement program.
For the Recycling Committee, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Ed McGrath. I am on the Recycling Committee and want to give a brief report on the North Readings recycling program. Currently, our recycling rate is at 23.9%, which is up slightly from last year. The co-mingled materials, the plastic metal and glass containers, is up about 1.5%. Paper is down 5%. I know people don't read paper newspapers as much, but Amazon seems to be no people buying from Amazon, so that's a bit of a concern for the committee. Through April, we have realized $71,357 in avoided tip fees, and the two-barrel limit, which was put into effect last year, trash is down almost 5%, contributing about $11,000 to the $71,000 figure I just mentioned. Next, this Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the DPW complex, we're holding the annual special collection. New this year is paper shredding. Each resident can bring two 12-by-12-by-24-inch boxes to get shredded. We're also collecting rigid plastics. Last year we did this, we collected 1.5 tons of rigid plastics. So, if your son or daughter is at the prom tonight, those toys in the yard or garage you bought 10 or more years ago, bring them Saturday. We're also collecting scrap metal, car batteries, and four-feet propane tanks and tires, as we've done in past years. And just to mark your calendar, September 12th will be the Household Hazardous Waste Couple more things, we're on Facebook, North Reading Recycles. We hit 200 likes about a week or so ago, brought joy to my heart, but we use it to help inform residents of what's going on and when these events are coming up as a reminder. So, if you're on Facebook, look us up, like us, and we won't bury your newsfeed with a bunch of announcements. And finally, the Recycling Committee is down to five people. We want to welcome new members, so if you're interested, our next meeting is June 30th. We welcome you to come to that meeting and check it out and see if you want to participate more fully. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
For the Secondary School Building Committee, Mr. Carrucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let's see if I can get this down. I'm just going to give you a little update of what's happening on the project here. One thing, if you were here earlier tonight, you missed a sight. The first graduating class of North Reading out of this new building had their prom tonight, and they had the grand march out on Main Street, which kind of decorated Main Street a little bit, which was nice to see. The project is running on schedule, and it's running on budget up to today, and I only give you till today. The other things that are going to happen is the contractor is going to turn the building over, the middle school building, over to us around August 10th, which gives the opportunity for the middle school to move everything up to the new building. And that'll happen, so the school will be opened in September. Today, the trees have started to arrive for the project, and the plantings will start this week, and you'll probably see a different outlook on the building in the next couple of weeks. The next thing on the agenda is the access road is going to be closed come June 29th, John? Is it June 29th we're closing? The school will close June 29th, June 30th. The access road, the driveway coming up to the school will be closed. The only way you'll be able to get to the school, it'll be through Dodge Road. I don't know if the abuddhas have been notified yet, but that's where the traffic is going to go, because Sherman Road also will be closed off. And that'll happen on the 30th of June. And the only other thing that's unfortunate that's happened in the building is that we've had some vandalism from the students. I just hope the parents can talk to their children and remind them why this building was built, and it's your tax money that's being used to support this. With that, thank you.
And for the Economic Development Committee, which is a new committee, Mr. Prisco. And for the Economic Development Committee, which is a new committee, Mr. Prisco.
Thank you. Back in February this year, the Board of Selectmen and the CPC jointly established an Economic Development Committee. We felt very strongly that it's something that we need to get in place to look at the long-term health of the community, to make sure that we find new revenues to help offset some of our continued increases in expenses. The main focus of the Economic Development Committee is to really provide some advisement to the CPC, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Administrator on all economic development matters. We created the committee with seven voting members, and I have a separate slide on that. And we also have non-voting members, which we call associate members. We initially started out with staggering terms, so in the future, as we go along, we don't have everybody turning over at the same time. These are three-year terms as we go forward. The Board of Selectmen and the CPC positions are the appointed positions, and those positions would expire either when our term on our boards are completed, we're not re-elected, or the chairman decides to appoint someone else. So this is currently the makeup of our Economic Development Committee. You can see there's the names of the seven voting members. Richard Wellner is our chairman, and Mr. Joe Lara is our vice chair. I am the clerk. And we have Mr. Chris Hayden from the CPC, Peter Bale, Sean Delaney, and David Ferrara. All North Reading residents, all with different backgrounds and expertise to support the charge that I'm going to show you in the next slide. But I also want to point out the associate members, because they provide equally amount of effort and time. We have five of them right now. We have unlimited number, so if anyone's interested in joining. But you can see up here, some of them are North Reading residents. We have a Wilmington resident, and we also have a Reading resident, both with great backgrounds, provide a lot of effort, and a great commitment to our committee. But I also want to point out that our Town Administrator and our Town Planner have given us a tremendous amount of time. They've made every effort to make every one of our meetings so far, and we appreciate it. We really do, and we know how busy they both are. Here's our charge. This slide just summarized it with 10 bullets. I'm going to only focus on the first four, because we're trying to prioritize our time as well, and most of us have day jobs. So the key here is we want to create an economic development strategy that fits with the town's long-term plan, with our master plan. Also, the Board of Selectmen and the CPC have objectives they have to create every year, and we want to make sure we integrate those objectives into our economic development strategy. We're also going to be looking at a marketing plan, how to best take the resource of this town, what it has to offer, its strength and its opportunities, and how to package that up and get that out to the Commonwealth, to open up North Reading to more people, to make them more aware of what we have to offer here. We're developing a plan for the reuse of the JT Berry. I have a separate slide on that, so I'm going to move on to the next bullet. Establish a dialogue is what we'd like to start to do with the commercial business owners, especially down Concord Street and Route 28. I'd like to start a dialogue with them, get them aware of what we're trying to do, because we need them on board, we need them committed. And some of the efforts that we're taking on, we will be pushing on or recommending to these commercial property owners as well, to make reinvestments in their property and maybe even consider other uses for their properties. Any of these other bullets, feel free to grab me afterwards, email me, give me a call at any time. Or any of the board members and committee members you see up behind me that were on that slide previously, give them a call, or you can attend any of our meetings. Just want to give a quick update on the JT Berry. As you know, in October Town Meeting, I gave a short presentation that the town has taken the efforts to go out and acquire the existing JT Berry property that's not developed yet from the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. We have made great steps there. At an October Town Meeting, the voters approved us $130,000 to go ahead and complete that transaction. As you can see here up above, we have money now to invest in a market study. We've already completed the environmental assessment. That report is all done. We have the money now to complete an appraisal, and then the money associated with any sunk costs or any other expenses we need to work with the state to close out that transaction, to transition the property over to the town of North Reading. The legislation process to get this done is underway. It's already gone through the House, was approved unanimously back in March, and now is sitting with the Senate, ready for a vote. Now that the budgets, or at least hopefully the budgets are going to be approved, they'll get their budgets done, that effort will be complete, and then they can take back up this legislation, get it voted. So I'm hoping, in the June timeframe, we're going to get an answer. But in the meantime, we're not sitting idle. We've been working with DCAM on a land distribution, I'm sorry, a land disposition agreement, which is basically a PNS. We've been going back and forth with comments from their legal counsel and our legal counsel. So once we get the legislation approved, we can go ahead and execute the transaction and complete it, take that over. Also, in the meantime, the Economic Development Committee's been meeting, building an RFP to bring in a commercial real estate company that we can hire, that can go out and market this property for us, do the market study, get the appraisal done for us professionally. This isn't what we do, so we're going to bring the experts in to do it. And also, one of the things we've been working on, which we hope to present to the CPC and the Board of Selectmen in the month of June, is our recommended uses for the property. But at the end of the day, the CPC and the Board of Selectmen jointly, we hope to get a vote from them on what they think the uses could be on that property. And once that's settled, we'd like to propose having a workshop, so we can present those parameters to the townspeople to give you an opportunity to voice your opinions, your ideas. We want to make sure that we have complete transparency and that we're communicating with the town as we move on. There's 37 acres over there. There's a lot we can do with it, and we definitely want to get the feedback. That's it. That's all I have.
Any other boards or committees wishing to give a report this evening? We've heard the reports that the Board of Selectmen wished to make a recommendation. Mrs. Manupalli.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
No actions required by the Finance Committee.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to accept easements on behalf of the town as specified in Article nine, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Herbert.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 10, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Misery, on a motion to admit.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following person be admitted to the meeting, Jonathan Lyon, 15 Beacon Drive, Meredith, New Hampshire.
On the motion to admit, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 10, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements as specified in Article 10, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee also recommends.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 11, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate such sum as may be allocated from the Chapter 90 apportionment or other state roadway reimbursement programs for the purposes of constructing, reconstructing, or maintaining roadways within the town of North Reading as specified in Article 11, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
The Board of Selectmen would like to fix some roads, so we're in favor of it.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Herbert.
The Finance Committee feels the same way and voted unanimously to approve.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 12, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,455.58 to pay bills of the prior year as specified in Article 12, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Misery.
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion?
Just to note that that amount is for three separate bills, one from Great Oaks Road publication, one from the Sealer and Waits Measure for Mileage, and Public Works Meals, probably during the snow and ice.
Further discussion? As its prior year bills, it requires a four-fifth vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article 13, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the column headed "Selectmen's Recommended" in the line items 1 through 107, excluding lines 49 and 50, solid waste management, and line 94, debt service, including the transfer of other funds. All is set forth in the budget detail dated June 1st, 2015, totaling $55,604,296. I'm sorry. It's $56,604,296. And further, that the lines for department salaries and expenses shall be considered a single appropriation for each department, except for lines 74 through 93, education, and 95 through 107, water, hillview, and parks and recreation enterprise funds.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation?
The Finance Committee also unanimously recommends.
For the School Committee.
The School Committee recommends.
Also, I'll call to your attention that one of the line items in the budget is in the school budget, and it contains, I think it's line item 92, when it says "unassigned", there is a handout that you should have gotten when you checked in that details what that unassigned number is. If you don't have it, and you put your hand up, someone will come down the aisle and get you a copy of that, if you're interested in getting it. I understand Mr. Gilberto has a presentation. Is it under five minutes?
I will go quickly, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Moderator, through you, there will be a second motion that Mr. Misery will offer as well.
Yes, there is a second, yes. Some line items are not included in the first motion.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I'll try to be brief with regard to the presentation on the operating budget. This is a description of the goals that we went through. How's that, better? Excellent. Thank you. So up behind me on the screen are the fiscal year 2016 budget goals that we used. Again, continuing to use conservative revenue assumptions, maintaining our critical reserves, trying to create long-term savings through labor contract negotiations, maintaining affordable health insurance plans, continuing to develop alternate revenue sources, continuing dedicated budget funding for the capital improvement program, as Mr. Kelleher identified previously. And again, and perhaps most importantly, continued budget collaboration between the town and school leaders through the financial planning process, which really is a year-round process at this point in time with regard to planning for the operating budget for any particular year. So just a high-level overview of the costs, a breakdown as our application of revenue for fiscal year 2016. Approximately $19.6 million, or 32%, would address fixed costs, which range from debt service to employee benefits. General government operations, police, fire, public works, and administrative services, for example, are approximately $14.97 million, or 23%. And then $27,495,074 for school department operations. This is a presentation of the revenue allocated between the general government operations and the school department after you remove the fixed costs. And this is a description of the revenue plan comparing fiscal year 2015 to fiscal year 2016, the budget which is proposed this evening to be passed by town meeting. Some of the major budget drivers, we start with a base tax levy. You see that we have a projection for new growth in town for new property value at $405,000. The debt exclusion is a debt which has been previously authorized above and beyond the proposition two-and-a-half limitation. The next three categories represent state aid to reflect where we believe will be modest increases in revenue from our partners at the state level. You see, we have allocated a slight reduction, a slight increase in local receipts, as well as other financial sources. This is a description of the available funds that we have, some of which play into this budget. I won't go through them all, but it just gives you an idea of funding sources that are available above and beyond the annual tax levy. This is a description of key revenue adjustments for fiscal year 2016's budget. You'll see that we're projecting an increase in motor vehicle excise, decreases in penalties and interest, investment income, and cemetery revenues. We expect an increase in revenue based on reserve premium for the sale of bonds, an increase in indirect cost funding from our enterprises at $11,931, and an increase in debt capital stabilization revenue at $11,922, again, as a funding source for next year's budget. Just a description of the key expenditure drivers for fiscal year 2016, an increase in general liability insurance, funding for our capital improvements, $131,583 increase in our regional school assessment tied to a change in enrollment, as well as a per pupil cost for fiscal year 2016 increase. Other post-employment benefits, again, was referenced in a prior presentation, we're aiming to get to a point of funding that liability, and this year's budget recommends allocating $125,000. I think you can expect to see a request and a recommendation to increase that number as we move forward for subsequent fiscal years. And then the allocation of $250,000 for snow and ice removal for excess costs that must be carried forward from fiscal year 2015 into 2016, and that was factored into the previous article that we considered with regard to snow and ice costs. A quick note regarding health insurance, again, a substantial cost driver. Communities seen certainly a range of increases from year to year. You'll see that our present year allocation is $5.449 million, or the budget includes a $100,000 increase. We're fortunate that we've tested the marketplace over the past few months, and it's resulted in a projected premium reduction of greater than 1%, and that'll be shared by town employees and by town budget as well. The average of our surrounding communities' increase, according to a survey, was 6.06%. So I think when we benchmark it, we are ahead of the trends, again, because of an aggressive... So I think when we benchmark it, we are ahead of the trends, again, because of an aggressive strategy on the part of the town. Our costs are compared with present-year subscriber enrollment, and we're adjusted to accommodate for new employees, both within the town budget and the school department budget. And we continue to maintain an ongoing dialogue with our unions and the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee to comply with Mass. General Law Chapter 32B. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Seeing none on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? We have one more motion under Article 13. Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the column headed Selectmen Recommended in the lines 49 through 50, solid waste management in the amount of $953,170, and line 94, debt service, in the amount of $7,790,479, including the transfer of other funds as set forth in the budget detail dated June
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Misery.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Palva.
Finance Committee also recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Misery.
We vote this budget in two pieces because this last motion that I made requires a two-thirds vote, so we split it into two pieces, but it's for the entire budget as outlined in the warrant. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 14. Just checking on a technicality. Article 14.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion 14, Article 14, to reappropriate the borrowing proceeds, the DPW truck. I move to transfer the surplus bond proceeds, which were originally appropriated under the Article 6 of the October 3, 2011 town meeting, for the purchase of a 10-wheel dump truck sander wing plow in the sum of $29,484 for the purpose of purchasing a school special education van with additional funds being sought in Article 16 of this town meeting as specified in Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Yule.
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Kelleher.
This article and the next are reappraisal of funds that were previously voted, and they're in service of the current capital plan, and the Finance Committee votes unanimously in favor.
For the School Committee, Mrs. Embryana.
School Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 15.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion on Article 15, reappropriate Martins Pond Flood Mitigation Bond Proceeds. I move to discontinue the Martins Pond Flood Mitigation Project and reappropriate the remaining bond proceeds to the sum of $1,334,272, which were reappropriated under Article 20 of the June 3, 2013 town meeting, and originally borrowed for the Route 62 culvert installation under the Article 7 of the April 5, 2010 town meeting, for the purpose of purchasing and replacing a DPW multi-function tractor as permitted by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, with additional funds being sought in Article 16 of this town meeting as specified in Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Yule.
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Kelleher.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
As this falls under Chapter 44, it needs a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article 16. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate amounts to purchase items of a capital nature as specified in Article 16 as printed in the warrant and recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and further, in all instances where "bond," quote-unquote, is listed as a source of funds, said borrowings will be pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 9, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said specified sums and issue bonds and notes therefore.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Kelleher.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article as well. I can go through the list of items in the warrant, if that's what people would like, or I can answer questions on any specific ones, but why don't I start, just, I'll go through them very quickly. Pardon?
For the School Committee, Mrs. Embryana.
The School Committee recommends.
Further discussion?
I'm sorry, Janine.
Mr. Kelleher.
Put on your toes. The items here and on the screen behind me are the items that have been recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee to the Board of Selectmen at their, at a meeting in April. Some of these are items that we will, we look at annually, and others are one-time. The first item is the Computer Equipment Replacement Program. That's an ongoing program, the IT department, and we've been funding this at $35,000 a year. The road program, this sum of $100,000 is to supplement the Chapter 90 money, which is about $510,000, I believe, this year, and will provide for not-accepted roads as well that the Chapter 90 does not pay for, but this will all be fungible money within the road program. The, we're replacing a pickup truck in the cemetery. In all cases where there are vehicles that are being recommended for replacement, the committee went out and looked at them, talked to the people who are responsible for them, got information on repairs, cost of repairs, mileage, and so forth. So the program is designed so that vehicles are replaced before they start costing us a lot of money, but we get full value out of them. The next item is the Hood School Parking Lot. This is a two-year program. This, this will do about half of the work that needs to be done there. This, this is a, we also did a site visit to the Hood School to take a look at, at the needs, and they are sorely needed. We need, we need to get this done, and as soon as the, this project can be awarded, then this needs to get underway. We expect the second half of this program will be on the capital plan for next year. Fire station improvements, again, an item that is sorely needed. The work that's being done here is being done on the flooring, on the first floor. There is other work that will probably have to be done in the fire station as well, and we'll be looking at that going forward. There is a, an evaluation being done of the, the needs for that building, but right now we, we're taking care of some of the more immediate problems. Special education van, the school department has several special ed vans, and the program is to replace the oldest one every year, so we're going to be seeing this come up again for the next two years. And the reason that this is such a small amount, $5,516, is on the, one of the previous articles, Article 14, we repurposed some funds that were in a previous authorization that were not used to help pay for this article, so all that we need is another $5,516, which will be, come out of free cash. The next item is replacing two trucks, DPW trucks, with one new truck, $176,000. It says cemetery on here, but it will be used, the cemetery department will also be used generally by DPW for snow plowing and other, other work. The drain system repairs, townwide, for stormwater, this is an ongoing project, and items have been identified that need to be dealt with. There will be more, I'm sure, coming, coming up as we try to deal with, with stormwater as, as a, to be in compliance with federal and state laws on how, how do we, how we're treating this. Town Hall, couple of offices in Town Hall are just not functional. The Finance Director's Office is one, and the Veterans Agent's Office is the other. And again, this was a site visit by the committee to look at the condition of these offices, the functionality of these offices, and we are recommending that some improvements be made to them so that they actually work better for the people that are using them. I skipped one. The Fund the Sewer, the final environmental impact report, we did a preliminary environmental impact report, I think, last year or the year before. This, this is a final report, and against, again, we're doing these reports in, in service of taking a look at sewer issues and to make sure we're in compliance with all of the federal and state laws. The GIS, the, a new townwide base map. This article, this, this request has come up in the past at least once and maybe twice to the committee, and we didn't recommend it before because there really was no home for monitoring this project. There is one now, the Town Administrator is placing it in the IT department, so that we're pretty confident that the GIS map will be updated, maintained, and be in good shape and, and for use by, by the town. The next item is a pickup truck for the fire department. Again, this is a vehicle that has, has gone up to its useful life as a, a fire department vehicle for pickup. It's not going to be disposed of, it's going to be used by the mechanic, it is perfectly functional for, for him to use, but as a frontline vehicle, it no longer works for that purpose. The device initiative, this could be labeled computer equipment for the school department. Again, this is an annual request to replace equipment as they age, so that we're not faced with a, a situation where all of the equipment is in need of replace at one time. So this we'll see, we have seen every year, and I expect we will continue to see this, and it makes good sense to have it on a regular program. The GIS Drain System Data Enhancement for Stormwater, again, this is to be in compliance with, with regulations. We need to map out all of the, the drain systems in town. The replace, the 2001 holder, the $15,000, again, refer back to Article 15. This was a piece, a multipurpose piece of equipment that the DPW has been keeping together with, with Band-Aids for several years. It does snow removal on sidewalks in the, in the wintertime. It is used for cutting back brush and other, other functions in the, in the, the rest of the year. And it is, it's old, and it's 2001, it's, it's given us everything it possibly give us, and we're running the risk of it just stop working, and we would have a more serious problem. So it's time to replace it. The next item is the ambulance replacement for the fire department, $292,000. This will be funded by the ambulance reserve when the ambulance is ordered and delivered. The water, final environmental report, like the one for the, the sewer, this is in, in service of looking at the, the sources and the, of, of water in, in the town. The AMR meter replacement for the water department, $1.7 million. This is an interesting item, very large, but there has been a study by consultants for the, the water enterprise, looking at our, our use of water and the capture of the water that is running through the system so it can be billed, and it was determined that we're losing about 6 percent of the water that comes through the system, it isn't billed. Putting new water meters in will capture that, and will actually save us more money than we will spend in the debt service on this. The, we're going to bond it for 10 years, the payback is about seven to eight years. So this, this makes, makes good sense, brings our water meters up, up-to-date. If we move forward with MWRA, we will have a good water metering system. And the other thing that it does is it will allow us to report the usage of the, of water, all water, residential and commercial, on a, a server at Town Hall, so that billing can be done directly from, from Town Hall. Nobody's going to need to go out and read meters, and there won't be any delay in getting bills out. Bills can be done on a regularly scheduled basis. If we want to continue doing them quarterly, we can do that. If we want to do them monthly, we could do that, but that's, that's a decision that the, that'll be made at a later time by the, the administration. The Lakeside Water Treatment Plan, roof repairs, repairs that are obviously necessary to this roof to keep the, the building functioning. Again, we looked at some pictures of that, we didn't actually make a field trip on that one, but it was pretty obvious that something had to be done with those, those roofs. They replaced the 2005 SUV for the water department, again, like the other vehicles, we looked at, looked at the vehicle and got information on its usage and, and cost of repair, and agreed with the, with the water department that it was time to replace it. And the final item here is a chlorine residual evaluation study. It's a study. It's something the water department needs to do to check the, the quality of the water, and I'm at a loss right now to give you any more of an explanation than that, but when we reviewed this with the, the water department, it seemed like a prudent thing to, to get done. So those are the items. The total... The total for items that are either through the raise and appropriate, bond, free cash, or from the earlier two articles come to $3,350,750. So we're doing a lot of improvement to our capital assets, and as I mentioned earlier when I gave you the report of the committee, we're hoping that we can continue to do this with the funding that the town is providing and the ability to bond where necessary. Questions? Yes, Marcy.
Mrs. Bailey.
There's a microphone coming here.
Donald, please, Mr. Kelleher.
Marcy Bailey, 21, Duane Drive. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Capital Improvement Committee for all the hard work in culling down this list. I have a question about the town road program, and it's probably a question that both pertains to this list and perhaps the Chapter 90 funds. The small part of Elm Street between Havrell and Park Street has needed attention for many years, going back to the Route 62 reconstruction project when traffic was diverted on that road. I believe that the neighbors were promised that that road would be looked at then. I bet, listening to the rain on the roof here, I bet if you drove down there now, the flooding would be significant, and I think that that road really needs attention, so I was wondering if it's part of this program, and if not, when it might be addressed.
It is not part of this year's program. Dick, do you want to?
Mr. Kelleher, please wait for recognition before speaking. Mr. Carnavale.
As part of our evaluation for roads to pave, we, as everybody knows, the drainage is very poor on Elm Street, so we had the town engineer look at it, and the estimate is in the order of $200,000 to fix the drainage before you can pave. That was part of the fiscal '16 capital improvement request, and it was not selected for this
Further questions or discussion?
Rosan Theobald, Bear Road, still on the town road program. Can you give us some detail what that $100,000 is going to be used for?
This year's paving, it will be Central Street from Park Street to North Street. That's in the order of $700,000, funded through two fiscal years. We're going to be doing Parks, Havrell Street from Park Street to North Street as well. Those are the major projects. And crack sealing, when you put the cracks in the road, the tar, we're doing about 20 roads for that as well. So those are the major projects. Depending how the costs come in for the work I just mentioned, we may have money to do other roads, but we won't know until the construction's done.
Further questions or discussion? As this is a bonding article, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 17, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-six thousand, $225,000 for the purpose of funding a milfoil treatment program, including herbicide, monitoring, and costs related thereto as specified in Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. O'Leary.
As you're probably aware, you know, Martins Pond, which is a valuable resource and beautiful area in town of North Reading, through the course of public hearings that the Board of Selectmen have had, and as well as the public hearings that the Martins Pond Association has put together in concert with Merrimack College, most of you are probably aware that Martins Pond is pretty much under attack from a vegetation of milfoil. A lot of studying has been undertaken by the Martins Pond Association Improvement, by the Martins Pond Association Improvement Committee and Merrimack College, and the entire program over a five-year period is about $91,000. Through the course of discussions, we have taken the approach of a little bit of a piecemeal approach by appropriating $56,000 to implement the program, monitor it over the next three years. The board has committed to, if necessary, fund the balance in a future fiscal year. Hopefully, the treatment which is being proposed will certainly assist in removing this milfoil from the Martins Pond area and improve the pond itself. So we urge you to, we recommend approval.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 18, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $87,588 for the purpose of funding FY 2016 retirement obligations for town employees as specified in Article 18 as printed in
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Misery.
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion, Mr. Misery.
Just a comment, these funds include both town and school employees that have retired.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 19, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from solid waste management lines 48 and 49 in the FY 2015 operating budget voted under Article 13 of the June 2, 2014 town meeting, the sum of $37,500 to be added to the solid waste stabilization fund established under Article 5 of the October 2007 town meeting as specified in Article 19 as printed in
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Misery.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, just a comment.
Mr. Misery.
This is surplus money left over from the previous year's cost of waste, disposal of our waste, and what we've collected in fees, and we apply that to the next, to our surplus. And this has allowed us to keep our solid waste cost flat for the past few years, and it's also been the efforts of our waste reuse, I'm sorry, recycling committee, sorry, and their efforts to continue to keep our, oh, boy, that cost down, I'm sorry. Thank you.
As this is a stabilization fund transaction, it requires a two-thirds vote. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 20, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of funding the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established under Article 19 of the June 3, 2013 town meeting as specified in Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Misery.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee also recommends.
Mr. Misery.
As you heard earlier, Mrs. Hilbert mentioned the fact that, you know, our OPEB requirement is in the $68 million level. Of course, that number moves around as the years go by. So what the Board of Selectmen has done, it's a daunting task, we decided to take immediate action and fund all of our new town employees as they come onboard to make sure that when they get to retire, the fund will cover their retirement insurance, health insurance cost. So the number is about $250,000 required, and this year, it was also mentioned the budget's very tight, so we're budgeting $125,000 with the goal of getting to $250,000 so we don't have that single shock and we take away from some of our operating expenses. So next year, we will be proposing $250,000 will be on an annual basis, the beginning of providing the funds required for all new employees' health insurance to be funded at the time of retirement.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 21, Mr. Hayden.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee also recommends to pass over.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
The Community Planning Commission recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Hayden.
The CPC recently received a $25,000 technical assistance grant from the Metropolitan Area Community Planning Council for economic development planning along the Route 28 Commercial Corridor. The grant application was submitted by our town planner who received notice that the North Reading was selected for the grant program last week. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommending passing over the Article 21 because the town funds are no longer needed.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of the Town of North Reading general bylaw by deleting Chapter 152, Section 1-4 in its entirety, and insert in its place new text as printed in Article 22 with the following addition, add the words "or his designee" after the words "the chief of police" to Section 152-3B, and to authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of North Reading as specified in Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Prisco.
Majority of the board recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
Finance Committee recommend.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Oh, sorry, nearly unanimous. Article 23, Mrs. Manupelli.
Mr. Moderator, Article 23, amend the code, general bylaws, Chapter 158-9, snow removal on streets and sidewalks. I move to pass over Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mrs. Manupelli.
Ms. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommended pass over.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
The Finance Committee also recommended to pass over.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 24, Mrs. Manupelli.
Ms. Moderator, Article 24, amending the code, the general bylaws, Youth Services, Chapter 198, Youth Services Committee. I move to amend the code of the Town of North Reading general bylaws by deleting the current text of Chapter 198 in its entirety and inserting in its place the amended text for Chapter 198 as printed in Article 24 of the warrant, and to authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of North Reading as specified in Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Manupelli.
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Pulver.
No action required for the Finance Committee.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 25, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of North Reading general bylaw, Chapter 104- Article 2, leche, local fingerprint submission requirement for licensed applicants by adding the following occupational license that will require national fingerprint-based criminal history checks, Class II automobile license, to the license listed in Section 104-3, and authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of North Reading as specified in Article 25 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Prisco.
Majority recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mrs. Capazudo, please wait for the microphone.
Thank you, is it on? Hello, Loretta A. Capazudo, 12, Duane Drive. I just have a quick question, Mr. Prisco, is there a fee associated for the applicant for the fingerprinting?
Mr. Prisco.
Yes, there is a fee associated with it, but what I believe we're going to do in this bylaw is that the initial fee will be paid, and then annually, they have to, at least from the town standpoint, they have to redo this, and we're going to waive the town's fee as they go on. They only have to pay the town fee once, but the state fee, I believe, they're going to have to pay annually.
Thank you.
I just want to get a confirmation from the police chief. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Was that unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. Unanimous. Article 26, we're going to do one motion on Articles 26 through 34. These are all revolving funds, and the Board of Selectmen wanted to give my Fitbit a rest. Mr. Prisco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Try to read this as clear, quickly as possible. I move to reauthorize the following revolving funds as specified in Article 26 through 34 as printed in the warrant. Article 26, conservation, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2016 at $100,000. Article 27, Damon Tavern, to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2016 at $78,000. Article 28, Rain Barrel, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2016 change so we can finalize it and be done with it. At approximately 175 feet.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article 36. As I understand it, Mr. Passakarnas, the petitioner on this article has a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to amend the Town of North Reading zoning map by changing the zoning designation of 16 parcels of land located on Pluff Avenue and Fairway Road currently containing single-family residential homes from highway business to residence B, said parcels being those listed
Okay, we have the motion. Does the, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Maseri.
The Board of Selectmen recommends on a 3 to 2 vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Mixing it up or something.
Strike that.
The Board of Selectmen recommends four in favor, one abstention.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation? We need the microphone.
Has there been any change to the articles? Number four plus still included?
Do you, does Fi- Finance Committee's going to vote after the presentation. Does the CPC wish to give their oral report at this time or do you want to wait for the Is the presentation over five minutes?
Yes.
You need to request leave of the meeting for the time length of the presentation and I'll caution you, go a little over. So if you think it's 10, go 15.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request leave to make a presentation, no longer than 15 minutes, please.
We have requests for leave of the meeting for purposes of a presentation. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? You have 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Seth Passakarnas. I am a resident of North Reading. I live at 7 Fairway Road. I want to thank the moderator and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the CPC for listening to the concerns that I've had and that my neighbors have had. And also thank you all for coming out here tonight. We very much appreciate everybody coming out and voting either yea or nay, but what you've done is come out and vote and that's what's important. So Article 36 is a zoning petition. I'm going to talk about the purpose of the petition and I'm going to give some highlights of what's happening at the end of our street at 299 Main Street. And at the end of the presentation, I hope I will have earned your vote in favor. The primary purpose of zoning is to segregate uses that are thought to be incompatible. I'm sure everybody here knows there are various types of zoning, business, industrial, residential, and the purpose of that is to separate uses. Residential means people live over here, industrial means there are industrial businesses over here. What we're going to talk about tonight is the difference between highway business versus residential. So this is a clean zoning map of the town. The subject of my petition is Pluff Avenue and Fairway Road. If you're familiar with Route 28 north, just past Stop &amp; Shop, there's a Dunkin' Donuts. We live behind that Dunkin' Donuts. This is a clean zoning map. You'll see that we're in the upper left-hand corner of this zoning map in the red area. The red area is highway business. You'll also notice that the blue area is the Aquifer Protection District because we are close to Martin's Pond. If I zoom in on that area, what we're talking about here is where it says Pluff Avenue and Fairway Road. Sorry, let me go back one. Route 28 runs right in the middle of this red area, so on each side of Route 28 is zoned highway business. We are on the right side and this is what we're trying to rezone. We don't want this to be highway business anymore, we want this to be residential. And that is because there are 16 parcels of land there, all of which have single-family residential homes on them. So that's what we're trying to do. Here's another map showing our development. Pluff Ave was built about 80 years ago. Homes were built on Pluff Ave. Fairway Road was a 40B development that was developed approximately 15 years ago. We have about 10 homes on Fairway Road and another 10 on Pluff Ave. A little bit about our neighborhood, I just said, 16 parcels, all single-family homes. We have 21 children ranging from 1 to 16 years old. We're a dead-end street with a single means of ingress and egress. And that means the only way that we can get to our property is to drive onto Pluff Ave and all the way to the end of Pluff Ave to Fairway Road. We strongly value our neighborhood and the quiet residential feel that we have. These are just some pictures of what it looks like. If you look at the picture on the right, you can see 28 at the very top. Pluff Ave runs toward north and south here, or up and down, and then Fairway Road is here at the end. I looked up the Town Master Plan because I thought that what we were doing here was a good idea for public safety purposes and other purposes. I went on the town's website and found the community core values from the Town Master Plan and have highlighted the sections that I think that our petition supports, and that's public safety, the preservation and improvement of the environment, and the preservation of the town character, health and welfare for all, and a sense of community compassion. Again, the purpose of the petition here is to preserve the residential integrity of our neighborhood. We are residences, single-family homes, this is where we live. We think that it's more appropriately zoned residential than highway business. It's a matter of public safety, children's safety, and protecting our ingress and egress. One of the issues that we have right now is that the business that is on the corner, 1299 Main Street, is seeking to expand. We want to stop that expansion from happening because they are running a demolition and excavation business that is very disruptive to our neighborhood. There's a lot of noise very early in the morning. There are trucks out on the street loading and unloading. And what we want to do is we want to stop businesses from expanding up Pluff Ave and bringing the trucks further and further into our neighborhood and stop what I've called here the domino effect. Because if one property falls, then the next falls and the next falls, and before you know it, the business has expanded all the way up Pluff Ave. We request your vote tonight. We believe it's consistent with the purpose of the zoning bylaws and the community core values and that it recognizes the reality of the situation, which is that we are residences, we are single-family homes. We're not looking to change anything that isn't already happening right there. All 16 parcels are currently owner-occupied homes. I want to talk a minute about what's happening at the corner of Pluff Ave and Main Street, and that's at 299 Main Street. This property was purchased approximately a year and a half ago by a company called T. Zanelli Realty LLC, and they executed a long-term lease with Zanelli Excavating. They began operating a construction and excavating company and using Pluff Ave as their only means of ingress and egress. And what do I mean by that? This is if you're standing out on 28, and this is an old photo that I was able to obtain before Zanelli Realty bought the property. Pluff Ave is here, running up and down, and what's happening if I go to this shot is that in the back, they are now operating an excavation business and they are using Pluff Ave here to load, unload, and do other business-related activities, which is disruptive to our ability to get out to Route 28 and also to get into our neighborhood. Some highlights of Zanelli Excavating. They have two to three dump trucks there regularly, two to three front-end loaders, flatbed trucks, and they have a large bay which is storing construction, excavation materials, as well as salt and sand. There's a lot of noise coming from this area. Some of the residents here will speak to that tonight who are very close to this issue. There's also a series of unpermitted site improvements that we believe he made to this property without the proper permits from the zoning inspector. So what do these vehicles look like? There's two to three of these dump trucks there. These pictures are all from the Zanelli website, by the way, I didn't take these off of Google or anything. There's an excavator, there's this chipping piece of equipment, another excavator, and more shots of the excavator and the dump truck. So if you go back and go back to this picture right here, those types of pieces of equipment are being stored out back by that little shed right there and coming in and out of Pluff Ave. I think that this petition should seriously be considered by everyone here tonight because I think it forwards one of the goals of the town, and that's to beautify or at least make things better on Route 28. There's definitely inconsistencies of the way that things look on Route 28, and I would suggest that having a demolition and excavation company is not going to increase the positive image on Route 28 and encourage other businesses such as Dunkin' Donuts or the Great American Tavern to invest in their complexes if they're right next to an excavation company. This is one of the structures that Zanelli built on the property. It's supposedly a temporary structure, it's been there for almost a year and a half. I have not seen and we've requested permits for the construction of this storage shed and we don't believe that there is a permit. He also installed a drain right in front of the shed where salt is being stored, and we don't know where that drain goes to because we believe that was also an unpermitted site improvement. And again, this is an Aquifer Protection District, so these are two primary concerns that we have about the environment and where the sand and salt and excavation materials are going that are going down this drain. As I mentioned before, he intends to expand up Pluff Avenue and develop that property at 4 Pluff Avenue for commercial business. He plans to put an enormous structure on that property covering more than 50% of the square footage. It includes four drive-in stalls where you're going to drive in trucks and bathrooms in each stall. So we're concerned that he may be wanting to rent each of those stalls out to other companies. And right now, we can't really control the traffic up and down Pluff Ave. We're certainly not going to be able to control it if there's four more businesses coming in and out of there with trucks. On Friday, I requested copies of the plans that he had previously shown us about that development so that I could present them to the neighbors and so that they could make an informed decision about whether we wanted to make any changes to this zoning article tonight. I contacted his lawyer and reached out for copies of those plans. I got no response and late in the day on Friday, I asked again for a copy of those plans and I was told there are no plans. I found out this morning that not only are there plans, plans were filed with the CPC on Friday in an attempt to stop what's happening here tonight, and that is the voting on this warrant article. It didn't stop it, the vote is going forward tonight, and again, we ask you for your vote. Highway business zoning. What is highway business zoning? It's for businesses involved in retailing services, amusement, and recreation activities. All uses are restricted to closed buildings except for drive-up windows where specifically approved, and the outdoor storage of materials and supplies is prohibited unless specifically approved. We believe that the business that is there now is currently in violation of all these zoning characteristics. Prohibited uses include heavy construction equipment rental or leasing. This is the Zanelli website. If you want to rent a Mack 10-wheel dump, a loader, a skid steer, a 12,000-pound excavator or a 16-ton excavator, you can rent those at 299 Main Street. This is what a 16-ton excavator looks like. How do you think a 16-ton excavator is going to get transported off of that property? It's going to, it's going to happen like this. Somebody's going to drive out in the middle of the street with a flatbed truck- Somebody's going to drive out in the middle of the street with a flatbed truck and load it up there. This is a perfect shot of what we deal with on a daily basis, and green is a car coming down Pluff Ave. He's got this first vehicle to navigate, and then when he gets past that, he's got somebody loading up something out front. And then here's another angle of a different circumstance where an SUV has to go around two vehicles that are parked out on Pluff Ave. One of the issues that we have with 1299 Main Street is the lack of transparency with their development. They're not being very clear with what they want to do, and they're certainly not providing us through their attorneys with the information that we request. We're very concerned about this. We're very concerned about the noise, the trucks, and the safety issues that I just We're also very concerned about how confrontational this has become. On Friday, there was a police report filed because Tim Zanelli confronted Peter Gluck at his property at, I believe, at 6 Pluff Ave. And in the police report, it says that Mr. Zanelli threatened to knock his teeth out and burn his house down. We have 21 children in our neighborhood, and we want to... I'm sorry.
Let's stick to the zoning, okay? Let's not... Excuse me. We need to stick to the zoning. We don't want to get personal, and we can't have hearsay. Okay?
Thank you very much. I'll wrap up very briefly and just say that this is an extremely important issue to our neighborhood. I wouldn't be here, and our neighbors wouldn't be here if it wasn't extremely important to us. You already heard that the Board of Selectmen tonight, earlier tonight, voted four to zero with Mr. Yule abstaining in favor of our petition and recommending that the petition be passed. Again, this is in the best interests of the public at large. We think that it maintains the purpose of zoning bylaws, that it meets the core values that are articulated in the town's master plan. It does not impact anything that's going on on 28. We're not seeking to change any highway business zoning on Route 28, just our neighborhood, just 16 residences. It preserves the residential integrity and feel of our neighborhood, and again, it's good for public safety. Thank you. And there is one change to the petition that I have made, and that's based on the recommendation of the Community Planning Commission. We've decided that we would like to change it from rezoning it to residential A to residential B. So instead of rezoning it as residential A, we want it to be residential B. And the reason for that is more of the properties on Pluff Ave will actually become compliant with the residential B zoning, which is a smaller parcel than residence A. So that's why we've made that change. Thank you again.
Mr. Hayden, please use the microphone. The article as presented was from highway business to residence B. He was just clarifying because that's different than the... That's different than the...
The original motion was on the screen. That's where I was going to use it.
Okay. The motion... Just so everybody's on the same page. I didn't see it on the screen. The motion he made was to change the 16 parcels, as printed in the warrant, from highway business to residence B, not residence A as it states in the warrant. And that's within the four corners of the article. Does CPC wish to make an oral report and a recommendation? Mr. Hayden, you have the floor. The recommendation, then your oral report, which is required.
Right. The CPC does not recommend. At the request of Seth Passanakis and others, the Community Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on April 21, 2015 pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5. At the public hearing, the CPC members heard testimonies from the petitioners, other neighbors residing on Pluff Ave and Fairway Road, and the owners of 299 Main Street. At the hearing, comments were made in favor of the zoning effort citing negative impacts to the residential neighborhood from adjacent uses in the highway business zoning district. Comments were also made in opposition to the petition citing concerns over loss of business zone property in the town. At the public hearing, CPC members discussed the fact that an earlier comprehensive permit had made the residential zoning on Fairway Road possible, overriding the highway business zoning, which does not allow residential development. At the end of the public hearing, the CPC members felt they did not have sufficient information to make a recommendation to town meeting. On May 18, 2015, the Board of Selectmen held a public hearing on the warrant article, and some CPC members attended. Following this hearing, the CPC scheduled a meeting on May 27, 2015 to discuss the article and deliberate further. At the May 27 meeting, the CPC members noted that the public hearing for this matter was closed. Testimony from the CPC hearing and the Board of Selectmen public hearing was noted. On May 27, the CPC members discussed their concerns about the petition, noting its inconsistency with previous town master plans since this was not an area designated for commercial development... Was an area... Excuse me. Was an area designated for commercial development. They further noted that the comprehensive permit residential development was also inconsistent with previous master plans. Some CPC members observed that it made little difference what the underlying zoning was for Fairway Road subdivision since everything done under the comprehensive permit was likely to always remain residential. It was also noted that based on an opinion from town council, changing this zoning would not introduce new burdens to the property owners due to creating new nonconformities, many additions, and changes to homes on the properties already required, variances under the highway business zoning district, and would continue to require them under the new zoning. On May 27, CPC members also noted that the owner of 4 Pluff Ave, which is proposed for rezoning, had made it known that she did not support the petition. The CPC members agreed that rezoning this property against the owner's will when she had purchased it with the expectation that it would one day be sold for commercial development was unfair. The members agreed that they would support the petition only if it were amended to remove 4 Pluff Ave for the rezoning. On May 27, CPC members also noted a preference that the new zoning district proposed should be changed to residence B since the dimensional requirements of the RB district, 20,000 square feet and 125 feet of frontage, could be met by several of the properties proposed for rezoning, while only one could meet the requirements of residence A, 40,000 square feet and 160 feet of frontage. At the conclusion of the meeting, the CPC voted zero in favor and five against to recommend the citizen's petition as it was submitted. The CPC does not recommend the citizen's petition as presented. On May 29, 2015, a new A&R perimeter plan was filed by the owner of 4 Pluff Ave and 299 Main Street, which will grandfather present zoning on 4 Pluff Ave only. This gives the CPC further reasoning for supporting the removal of 4 Pluff Ave from the citizen's petition.
Patricia Fillmore, 24, Fieldcrest Terrace, North Reading. My first question is, when you people moved in, weren't you under... Didn't you know that this was commercial area? I mean, it's been commercial for years upon years. Why change it now? These people have lived here for many, many years. Why change it to abide by your rules? Second statement is, you've got the wrong address up there. You're saying 1299 Main Street. It's 299 Main Street. So you're voting on something that's not even... I mean, my question is, why change it on these people? These people that have lived here for many, many years moved there knowing that it was commercial property, and you're saying they've got Big Mac trucks coming in. I have yet to see a humongous truck parked there, and I have yet to see anybody digging up or excavating 28 the way you seem to claim that they're going to be doing it. I think you should leave it the way it is. These people have lived here for many, many years. A lot of these people have lived here for many, many years. So why change it on them now?
Wait a second. Yes, the petitioner may respond to the question.
Your first question, when we moved in, did we know that it was zoned highway business or residential? I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not sure if anybody here, when they bought their property, went and looked at the zoning maps and said, hey, is this zoned commercially or is this zoned residentially? What we did when we bought our properties is we moved into an area where it was a very residential feel, and that's why we bought our property there. We knew that there were businesses down the end of the street who were operating consistently as businesses. This issue has come to fruition over the last year and a half when that property was sold and an entirely new type of business came in, completely changed the type of use, which really triggered all of us to collectively come together and say, wait, what's happening here? We thought that this was a residential neighborhood. Why is there an excavator and a dump truck out in the middle of the road now? And that's what led us here today. So, no, I don't think any of us knew that we were zoned business when we moved in. We bought our house because it was a house in a nice neighborhood, and that's slowly being eroded. In terms of changing expectations on people, everyone in the neighborhood supports this change, and you can hear from all of them, they're all here tonight, with the exception of one person, and that's 4 Pluff Ave, who is directly adjacent to 299 Main Street. I apologize, I made a typographical error in my presentation. It's 299 Main Street. The only people that are against this are 299 Main Street, which is Zanelli Excavating, and 4 Pluff Ave, who stands to benefit financially from selling her home to Zanelli, which will allow Zanelli to demolish her home and use that as his business. So what we're asking is, from our neighborhood perspective, we are all asking you to keep what is there now and don't allow the erosion of our neighborhood and the expansion of that business up Pluff Ave, up to where our children are. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up. North Reading wants business in this town. So with things like this saying, well, we're going to vote to not to have commercial because for years upon years, kids have lived on that area, but now that there's a different set of kids, we don't want the business there. So, I mean, you're... If you want business in town, you have to accept them. And I don't see any problem down in that area, but...
Hi, my name is Jim O'Rourke, 4 Lee Road, North Reading. I'd like to respond to the comments regarding 16 against one or 15 against one. One person's rights do matter. And the fact that the majority of those people want to make a change doesn't give them the right to walk on the rights of another person, number one. Number two, a lot of the complaints that we heard were regarding questions about use of the property, and that has nothing to do with the rezoning. That has to do with possible violations of other rules regarding the use of a property for business. And tying that all together, I don't think is proper. There are channels to be dealt... To deal with other issues. If there's issues of use of Pluff Ave, the street itself, blocking traffic and so forth, that has to be dealt with with the police department. If there are questions of violations about structures on the property and so forth, that can be dealt with by the building inspector. That doesn't need to be rezoned. That needs to be dealt with appropriately.
Thank you. And now that you brought that up, I'm glad you did, because I do want the discussion to stay on focus to the 16 parcels, the rezoning of the 16 parcels. I don't want to get into a long discussion about 299 Main Street. Okay? 299 Main Street may have brought this issue forward, but that is not the issue that's being debated tonight. So if you... I allowed it as part of the presentation because it is the genesis of this whole article, but it is not to be debated here on town meeting floor. It's not an issue for us to discuss. We're discussing 16 parcels and the rezoning thereof. Sir.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. My name is Timothy Zanelli. I reside at 3 Beach Road, North Reading. My attorney, Don Bornstein, is... Has joined me here tonight in the non-voters section. I'd like him to assist me in addressing this article that directly affects my property's interests. I move that a non-resident of the town be allowed to briefly address town meeting on this article.
So you have a request for your attorney to address the town meeting? On your behalf? Okay. And the attorney's name, please? Okay. So we have a request to allow Attorney Bornstein to address town meeting on behalf of Mr. Zanelli? I'll allow Mr. Bornstein to address.
Does the walk-down count, Mr. Moderator? Does the walk-down count against...
No, but that does. No.
That's fine.
Ready? Set? Go!
I am paid by the minute. My name is Don Bornstein. I'm an attorney. I represent Tim Zanelli. My office is located at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover. I have some prepared remarks that I want to go through very quickly with the town meeting. I do want to thank you for allowing me to address the town meeting tonight. I'm a bit of a fan of town meetings. I attend a lot of them, and I found an interesting piece while I've been sitting up in the back listening to everyone unanimously decide everything all night till we got to this one. I did note one thing that really caught my eye at the end of your... There's a citizens checklist right at the beginning of your booklet. Number eight on that list is, and it's sort of a list of things that you should sort of keep a lookout for during the course of your town meeting. Not sure who put this together or when they did, but there were some smart people that did it. Number eight is, is its appeal... It's talking about articles in the town meeting warrant. Is its appeal based on emotional propaganda or facts? The further a proposition gets away from facts, the more critical one should be. We heard a lot of discussion in the presentation of Article 36 tonight about Mr. Zanelli, about his business, about 299 Main Street. We heard almost nothing about the zoning change that's proposed or what it means to the town. We heard nothing about the financial impact. We heard nothing about the impact to the property owners within the area that would be rezoned. We heard nothing about the impact to Mrs. O'Rourke, who's had that property for a long time, and her family's had that property for a long time, expecting to sell it one day as a commercial property, of course, because it's in the middle of the commercial district, the highway business district. We saw a lot of pictures of big trucks. I didn't see one picture of a big truck on that property itself. I saw some fuzzy, grainy ones of some small trucks maybe near the property, might have been parked there for the Dunkin' Donuts. I'm not sure.
I can't allow... I can't allow shouting out from the audience. I really can't. I mean, Town Meeting, we follow a process. Okay? So if you wish to speak, raise your hand. When you're recognized, you may speak. Mr. Bornstein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And this is a critical process. It's important for people to disagree. It's important for people to disagree like this about local issues. I'm glad people have come out to try and support this article. I'm glad people have come out to oppose it. It's important we have a reasonable and professional discussion about it, regardless of the emotions that are involved. And there's clearly a lot of emotions involved here. But I do want to get out a couple of facts. There was... In fact, I was mentioned two or three times during the zoning meeting, not by... The zoning presentation, not by name. But I do want to clarify this plan that was supposedly filed intending to stop people from voting tonight. The plan that was filed was a simple boundary survey plan filed with the CPC. For tonight's meeting, in no way could we stop Town Meeting from voting on an article. Town Meeting does what it does. It has all sorts of powers. That was an ANR plan filed with CPC in the regular way. It's a survey boundary plan. It has all kinds of legal consequences or not. But it was not a site plan. It did not show what Mr. Zanelli intends to do with the property. It was a boundary plan. And to represent it at the Town Meeting is something different. Sort of stuck a little bit with me and I think needed to be addressed. I do have a couple of points. And I'm going to use the last three minutes of my five minutes right now just to go through a couple of facts and stick with the facts unless of the emotion. Mr. Zanelli is a North Reading resident and business owner. You heard him get up just a minute ago and address the meeting. Mr. Zanelli has owned and operated TZE Contractor Supply for three years. He rents tools and equipment and sells supplies to local contractors. Approximately a year ago, he purchased the property at 299 Main Street at the corner of Pluff Avenue and relocated his business there from Wilmington to do business in the town of North Reading. The property had previously been owned and operated as a refrigeration and ice machine sales, service, and rental company, fairly similar to what he does today. He kept the other prior tenants in place. There's currently a beauty salon there. And I believe there's an upstairs apartment that's been in that same location for a long time. The property has been located in the middle of the highway business district since 1968. Mr. Zanelli bought it knowing it was surrounded by commercially zoned property for hundreds of feet in every direction. Mr. Zanelli has recently agreed to buy the property and the small house located at 4 Pluff Avenue from his neighbor, Margaret O'Rourke. He eventually plans to use that property in connection with either his contractor supply business or for some other commercial use that is allowed under the North Reading zoning in the HB District. He understands that when he redevelops that property for commercial use, he'll need to go before the Town CPC and he'll need them to review and approve a site plan, something he has not submitted yet. This would likely include conditions designed to limit impact on his residential neighbors. The CPC is a somewhat unique animal in a town like North Reading. It's an elected body. I've been before it many times in the past. It takes its responsibilities very seriously. I see many of the members. I saw when I was last before them years ago. And the same concerns you're hearing today about how the property is operated would be something they would have to consider as part of any expansion or commercial development on that 4 Pluff Ave. property. Mr. Zanelli understands that some of his residential neighbors further down Pluff Avenue and on Fairway Drive don't like the fact that he operates his business down the street from their homes. He's done everything that Town officials have asked of him since moving into the 299 Main Street property. And he believes that he is in compliance with all of the town's rules and regulations. If he's not, they should cite him and give him a cease and desist or follow through some other regular process rather than asking the town to change its zoning. I understand that many of the neighbors that are supporting the proposed zoning change bought their homes that were built in the highway business district in the late 1990s and were only allowed to be built in this commercial district because they were developed under Chapter 40B, a comprehensive permit, that overrode the local zoning that had been chosen by the town in 1968 and had been stuck with by the town since then. I believe for the people who've moved in since the highway business zoning was created in 1968, they knew or should have known that they were moving into a commercial district where commercial businesses are specifically allowed to operate and expand. And in fact, the town encourages them to do that in the HB District. I find it... I hear Attorney Pastor Carnes's comments to the Town Meeting. And I understand that he's a civil engineer. He's a geotechnical engineer. I find it hard to believe he didn't know the district he was moving into. I don't think it's fair to Mr. Zanelli to change the town's 40-year-old highway business zoning to create a residential zoning district
Mr. Bornstein?
That'll come right up on his boundary.
Mr. Bornstein?
Speeding it up. Thank you.
Real fast.
Thank you. I also think it's... I don't think it's fair to Mr. Zanelli or Mrs. O'Rourke to rezone the property at 4 Pluff Ave. To residential, leaving it surrounded. And you don't see the picture right now, but they've left one little tail on that district. It'll be surrounded on three sides by commercial property. It's going to be rezoned, apparently to RB. I don't know that you can make that change at Town Meeting on the floor where it's been printed in the warrant as RA. But it's going to leave it surrounded by commercial property, a very difficult property to sell.
Mr. Bornstein, wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to close my comments, Mr. Moderator, by making a motion to amend Article 36.
You want to make a motion?
I do want to make a motion to amend.
You're not a... No, you can't.
I'll hand it to Mr. Zanelli to make right now, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Mr. Zanelli, if you're... Mr. Zanelli, if you're amending the main motion, it must be in writing. And then after you make the motion, I need it signed by you.
I... To amend Article 36 as printed in the warrant by deleting 4 Pluff Ave., map 12 parcel 127 from the list of parcels to be rezoned by the said article. So as to leave 4 Pluff Ave. Within existing highway business district.
Excuse me one second. Oh, don't sit down.
Mr. Zanelli?
Mr. Zanelli?
Mr. Zanelli?
Mr. Zanelli?
Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure this was technically correct. So, to make it technically correct, I'm just making a friendly change to it. So because we have a motion on the floor, an amendment must be to the main motion. So to amend the main motion under Article 36 by deleting 4 Pluff Ave., map 12 parcel 127 from the list of parcels to be rezoned by said article so as to leave 4 Pluff Ave., map 12 parcel 127 within the existing highway business zoning district. So that's the amendment to the main motion. So that is what we will speak to now. And...
Thank you. This is again the sort of last-minute legal trickery that we're dealing with. He's trying to take away from you the very issue that you are here to vote on, whether you think 4 Pluff Ave. and the rest of these parcels should be zoned as residential B or should they stay? Don't make a motion to take away the one parcel that we want changed in addition to all these others. Don't take that issue away from the Town voters. We disagree with this. I object to this because it's completely uncharacteristic of the petition that I brought before the community tonight. Just vote on the petition. If you think that the better interest is served by keeping all of these as highway business, vote... Shoot the petition down. If you think the better interest is in favor of the residents and the community and public safety, which we think it is, vote in favor of our petition. But don't take this away on the floor in a last-minute legal maneuver. And I want you to vote against the amendment, please, and vote on the petition that we presented to Town Hall.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation on the amendment? They're deliberating. Does Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation on the amendment? Mrs. O...
The Finance Committee accepts the recommendation... I accepts the...
Abby, into the mic.
The Finance Committee accepts the amendment. Supports the amendment to eliminate 4 Pluff Ave.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
The Planning Commission unanimously recommend...
On the amendment?
The amendment, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Hayden?
4 Pluff Ave., the owner of that parcel does not want to rezone it. They want to leave it as highway business, not rezone it. This takes... If the... This will allow that to happen, to continue to happen and not be rezoned?
Sir? No. Nope. Right there. No, with the tie.
Hi, Michael Kuschecki, 1 Fairway Road, North Reading. So far, we've heard from Seth, who is a resident in the neighborhood. We've heard from Don Bornstein, who lives in Andover and doesn't have a construction or excavation company start beginning or ending Route 28 in their beautiful downtown with frozen yogurt and whatever nice shops and quaint little neighborhoods that they have. And secondly, we have Mr. O'Rourke, who doesn't live here. Doesn't live in our neighborhood either, but wants to... Wants to benefit from that sale of that property financially. So with that being said, I live on Fairway Road right around the corner.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We are speaking to the amendment, only the amendment. We can't get personal. We can't do what you're doing.
Well, I wanted... We needed to speak up here. This is our petition, citizens petition that we're going through here. So we object to the amendment due to the fact that there is a lack of safety and concern for the residents on Fairway Road and Pluff Ave. And by expanding that property into 4 Pluff Ave., you are going to make it more dangerous and you're going to be renting stalls out to other companies that aren't... What Mr. Zanelli is going to say is, they're not my responsibility at this point. So now we have to manage four or five other companies or the town will or the police will have to manage four or five companies with a single egress and ingress that can barely bring an 18-wheel truck down the road. Secondly, the CPC has approved parking lots with used car lots. They've approved dump trucks coming through... Sorry, dumpsters southbound on Route 28. They've approved not the beautification, but any business in our town. And these are not the type of businesses that we want to grow down Pluff Ave., which is a residential neighborhood. Period.
Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On the amendment?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. The Board of Selectmen has recommended in favor of the amendment on a vote of three to two. Just as a way of explanation, earlier at our meeting, we voted 4-0-1 in favor of the petition as presented with the RB District change. At our previous meeting and public hearing, there were suggestions made to the residents, to Mr. Zanelli, to come to a compromise. If you look at the map in your warrant, if you just... What is it, on page... Page 42. Again, we don't have the benefit of it being up here, but it was in the presenter's presentation. Excuse me, wrong map. Page 44. Forty-four. If you look at the presentation on page 44, what was suggested at the Board of Selectmen public hearing for the petitioners to consider is to do exactly what is being proposed here in this amendment, which is again, leaving 4 Pluff Ave. in the highway district... Highway District Business District. If you look at that little peninsula sticking out, that's 4 Pluff Ave. What the board was looking to propose and looking to support was the residential neighborhood from 4 Pluff Ave. eastbound going into the residential A or B District. And again, securing their property and eliminating the domino effect of business, again, creeping into their neighborhood any further than it would. It's important to understand that the O'Rooks, who had owned both 299 Main Street and 4 Pluff Ave. for probably 40 years, it was, you know, their intention, always their intention, to have 4 Pluff Ave. available for future commercial expansion. That was all talked about at the public hearing. We did not tonight... The Board of Selectmen did not tonight have the benefit of the Planning Commission's recommendation before us. We asked them at their... At our public hearing to please take another look at it, continue to look at it, and deliberate over the matter. They did this evening as we were deliberating ourselves. And the board did not have the benefit of the CPC's recommendation. Again, so we think it's important that, you know, the O'Rooks' rights be perfected and secured. We also believe, though, that we came up at our meeting tonight and with the advice of counsel, that, you know, with the filing of an ANF plan, the O'Rooks may have very well perfected their interest in utilizing it in the highway business district for three years. So that kind of swayed us in relation to supporting the citizens petition earlier in the evening. This would certainly define it. And if you look at it, if you look at Route 28 and you look at eliminating 4 Pluff Ave., it'll be a straight line, equidistant with all the other parcels very close by as far as what would remain in the highway district. So on a vote of three to two, the Board of Selectmen recommends that you support the amendment as presented.
The irony here, folks, is that in the 2015 master plan, your elected officials identified the lack of trust of public officials as one of the issues in this town. What you just witnessed is the ultimate flip-flop. These people debated this motion two hours ago and decided to vote for, in favor of our petition. Now, as soon as someone steps up with an alternative viewpoint, which they debated fully two hours ago, now the vote is three to two. You can't trust the public officials. You can't trust us.
Look, stop. I'd ask you to stop right now. I will not allow personal attacks at this town meeting. Stop it! You know, there's an awful lot of new faces here tonight. I think that's great. You know what else I think would be great? If I saw these faces after this town meeting, at the next town meeting, and the town meeting after, not just for this article. Do not attack somebody in this hall, or I will have you removed. We have moved through this agenda quickly, speedily, but you can't attack each other. It does no good. It won't solve a thing. Speak to the amendment, please.
I meant no attack of the Board of Selectmen. My point is to trust your gut and trust all the information that's been presented to you here tonight. That's my point.
Mr. Scannell.
Michael Scannell, 44 Boroughs Road. Speaking to the amendment, I think that the folks that live on Pluff Ave and in that subdivision are doing what my mother used to call biting off their nose to spite their face. I think that this is a good compromise that allows the owner of 4 Pluff Ave to have her right to sell to whoever she wants. And I have all the confidence in the world, in our public officials, including the community Planning Committee, that they will do due diligence when the owners on Main Street propose whatever they're going to propose and make sure the right kind of business that's allowed under the zoning be put in there. And I would like at this point to move the question, please.
Ah, that's one little procedural glitch. You can't speak and then move to the question. Somebody else could move to the question. Nah, you're not going to move to the question. I didn't think so. I picked the wrong guy.
No, I'm sorry. And I'll try to be brief, I will. Because if I was sitting out there and I wasn't part of all these hearings and these debates, I would be very confused right now. So I'm going to try to sum it up as if I was sitting in that crowd, so you understand a little bit about what's going on. I was, I was one of the people that voted in favor of this article. That's one of the forwards. I was also the person that voted against this amendment. And the rationale why is because you heard tonight an A&amp;R plan had been submitted. It gives the owner of that property and it gives the owner of TZE at 299 Main Street three years to go ahead and get their plans through the CPC for approval. After three years, if they're not operating that business in there, then if we voted on the original amendment, the original article that was read, then it would go to Resident B and would stay Resident B forever. I think that's fair. That's why I voted for it. I think it's fair. It's fair to Mr. Zanelli and his business and give him the ability to expand so he can continue to operate. And it gives, one of the reasons why I heard the majority vote in favor of the original article was because we're broken as a town. Our zoning has some real problems in it, and we need to get them fixed. You know, the petitioner brought up some really good questions. You saw in there a question about these large tractors and the equipment. Well, you know, what's the debate? It's very difficult. The way the zoning is, it's, there's a lot of subjectivity to it. We need to fix it. And that's one of the reasons why I asked my board members to vote in favor, is to put the pressure on the CPC to make sure when they get this opportunity over the next three years to approve this plan, we do it right and we fix what's broken in our zoning so other residents in town don't have to go through it. And people like Mr. Zanelli, who are a business owner who's trying to make it work for himself, he doesn't have to go through this. It's as unfair to him as it is to the residents in Pluff Ave. So I really would recommend that this, people in this, I forget what we call it, but Performance Center, that you vote against this amendment and vote in favor of the original article because it gives everybody a fair chance to do the right thing here and then hold us accountable on the zoning. It is broken and we need to get it fixed, and I'm asking the CPC to do the right thing with our zoning. Fix the issue so this doesn't continue.
Article 21, we just voted on to study Main Street to develop more business. Article 36, we're trying to stifle business. It's not Mr. Zanelli's problem, but 15 of these property owners didn't go to the Town Hall and look at the map and see that they lived at the end of a commercial area. It sounds like the whole thing is a little lopsided. There's 16 pieces of property here that he wants to get rezoned. Well, if I got 15 of them done, I'd figure I won the game, but they're pushing for the 16. And that 16th one is the one that's causing all the problem. Instead of taking all your toys and going home, let's vote for the amendment, put it to bed, and we'll all go home.
Yes, Warren Pierce, Planning Board. Been on the planning board 23 years. It's never been easy, ever, to have a situation where you have residential up against commercial of any kind. I know this looks like a difficult one, but having a restaurant that's open all hours of the night and having residential property right next to that, the lighting, the whole thing, it's always a problem. For me, though, this is a whole lot simpler than that. For me, this is strictly an issue, you have to ask yourself this question. Does this one group of people have the right to take away the rights of another property owner to do what they wish with their property? And so I encourage you to vote for the amendment. The planning board put this forth to them as something they'd be in favor of because we thought, even though we know planning board in a town this small with this small amount of commercial property wants to give up any commercial property, as he said up there, I don't think it's something we just don't want to do. But in this case, it looked like there was a block of residential, fit together, and we thought we would accommodate them. But again, in my view, it's a very simple question. Does one group of people have the right to take away the rights of one other property owner? And I can't vote for that.
Mr. O'Leary, are you just stretching or are you? Mr. O'Leary.
I gave the majority a recommendation. This is my own personal opinion, and anybody and everybody here has a right to call into question. You know, I'm an elected official and, you know, I have to take positions on things all the time, and it's not always popular. And at times, believe it or not, I change my mind. We did not, and I did not, the board did not, we have motions, we had all these motions prepared, but we did not choose to put forth the main motion or an amendment to the motion or an amended motion. We decided to let the meeting decide how you want it to proceed. And then once an amendment was made, we would respond to that, and we did. You know, as far as, you know, trust in elected officials and all the rest, it can always be called into question, but there are no ulterior motives here on anybody's part in relation to this particular parcel and the amendment before us. That parcel still will have to go before the Planning Commission for site plan review because it's currently being used as residential. It would be a change in use, it would be subject to all the reviews in relation to the proper use, screening, entrance egress, and all the rest, whether it remains under the A&amp;R or whether or not it gets left in highway business. And to Mr. Pierce's point, which was very well said and simply said, you know, it is not necessarily right to take away the O'Rooks' right that they currently enjoy. And again, as far as the impact on the neighborhood, you know, not necessarily any more than what they're not enjoying right now. And again, the O'Rooks have been good, longtime residents. They have sold the property to somebody else. This is where the genesis of what the issue has really come about, and I think it's important for town officials, self-included, to ensure that our zoning enforcement officer, police department, anybody else, you know, enforce the rules and regulations that are in place. And I think the heightened awareness of the situation certainly will ensure that that does. But I think this is the most fair thing to do. I think just looking straight at the map, it makes more sense to leave 4 Pluff Avenue in the highway business district. I think it was a reasonable compromise that was proposed. Proponents chose not to accept that proposal and put it forth. It's now before you to do it, and I think it's a wise thing to do.
Mr. Healy, you've been incredibly patient way up there.
I just want to move to the question, if we could.
All those in favor of moving to the question?
Aye.
Okay, I think that's pretty clear. So we are now voting on the amendment. Is anyone opposed? Sorry.
Yes.
It's still clear. The motion carries. We're going to move to the question. On the amendment, would my tellers please come forward? If they're still here. This is on the amendment only, so this is to exclude 4 Pluff Avenue from the main motion, to exclude 4 Pluff Ave from the main motion. All those in favor of excluding 4 Pluff Ave from the main motion, please raise your Mr. Tilton. Mr. Crouchy.
26.
Mr. Crouchy. All right, that was 77, 44 against. It requires a two-thirds vote as a zone. Nope.
Amendment.
Oh, the amendment, the main motion. I'm sorry. Majority on the amendment. It's the main motion that'll require the two-thirds. Okay, so the motion carries. So 4 Pluff Ave is excluded. Now we're back to the main motion under Article 36. Further discussion. We have moved to the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. Okay. Would my tellers please step forward? This requires a two-thirds vote, so I am going to do a hand count. On the main motion, the recommendations on the main motion were, the selectmen were for, that gets convoluted because they voted one way on the amendment. I'm sorry? Please go, I can't hear, Rita. I can't hear from. Okay, I'm sorry. Recommendation on the main motion as amended. I'll give them all a minute to deliberate. Your recommendation on the main motion as amended. So it's the main motion, but it's 15 properties, 4 Pluff Ave is excluded.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. O'Leary, for the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend as amended.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend as amended. Mr. Pulver, for the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends as amended.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
CPC recommends.
So this is the main motion as amended. All those, if you're in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, the main motion was to change the zoning. The main motion was 16 properties, as listed in the warrant, to change them from highway business to Residence B. Not A, as printed in the warrant, B. I already ruled changing from A to B was within the four corners of the article. So the amendment excluded 4 Pluff Ave. So it's now 15 parcels. So it's every parcel listed in the warrant changing from highway business to Residence B with the exception of 4 Pluff Ave. That's what you're voting on. Do those 15 residences listed in the warrant change from highway business to residential B? If you're in favor of that, raise your hands. Mr. Fody. Mr. Crouchy. Mr. Tilton.
17.
Mr. Tilton. Mr. Fody. So two-thirds vote required, 86, 4, 26 against. Motion as amended carries. Mr. Missari.
First of all, I'd like to thank Wayne Hattaker and the entire school staff for setting up the auditorium for our town meeting. I'd also like to thank everybody here this evening and participating in our town meeting, and I encourage you to return. Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting, scene of D.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Have a great evening, everyone.